The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. All right, we're going to start with a motion in second to approve the agenda for tonight. We have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same time, motion carries. We have no one signed up for open forum tonight, so we'll write on to communications that Director of Business Services will talk about enrollment and then our monthly update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our enrollment is, I'm going to say it's kind of holding steady, we're down about five from last month. So we're trying to level off that, keep going to the graph. Trying to level off that graph there, so hopefully we'll hold that or keep it going up for the remainder of the year. And then on our monthly report for February, our expenses in general fund, we're like right on budget right now. Our debt service is fully paid for the years, we're not conceiving change there. Food service and community service are right at budget for so much last year as well. General fund revenues were there, our food service is slightly lower in revenue right now, and then our community ed is actually quite a bit higher with revenue right now. It's one that you know that next month I will be bringing a revised budget for the current year that we're in, this year '25, so I'll bring a revised budget to the board for approval. We'll be making some adjustments for enrollment, settlements that we've, the contracts that we've settled so far, and then any other revenues that we want to bear out last June when the original budget was presented. Any more questions?
Thanks, Rob. We have our student, our student board member, time to communicate. They couldn't be here tonight because they're involved in the variety show, but Dave, being Dave, sent me a nice update to share, so I'll quickly try to summarize. He said that Stagefire, Jazz Band are hosting the fifth annual variety show. It's the next three nights at seven o'clock, so he said please come to join. Also coming is the screenplay Art Home that Community Ed is hosting, it's April 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th. So he asked people, please join. Talked about the spring sports starting up, baseball, softball, lacrosse, track and field, tennis, and he said if you're looking for something to do, it's always a blast to go watch one of those sporting events. Bren would recommend softball.
I recommend all.
Of course you do. And then talked about the choir band going on a cruise trip, which I know Sarah went as well. Talks about the weather being perfect, the attractions were magical, and he just extended a thank you to the school board, the administration, Justice Undone, Mr. DeLeese, and all, all the other folks that went along and ordered for the trip. And then he said, please continue having these opportunities, they were awesome. And then that wrapped up his update, but wanted to read Dave's update. All right, so we'll move on to board committee updates. Did anyone have any committee work that they thought should be updated for all of us? I think I sent you all just now an email with this thread newsletter, they're doing kind of a field day for their students, but it looks very effective. It's going to be a really joyful event. Any other updates from the other board members? Hey, there's another, what will my board superintendent say?
A number of things, just to cover them quickly. I know there's been a lot of questions about the federal government at this point and some of the things that are happening, excessive orders and changes and potential for impacts on the Department of Education. I know we've got some questions that come to us on that, and the real easy answer to give is that we're sort of in a state of unknown. There is things moving, but there's not a lot of definition behind it. So as people, if you get those questions, obviously, yes, come talk to one of us, we're more than happy to at least try to interpret or answer, but it's actually even talking to our state legislators, they're in the same boat where you've talked about this very bodily times of life, we're all waiting for what is true for me. And I think that waiting is going to happen for a little while more, but I don't think there'll be a lot of popularity for probably COVID-4 of '25 or even '26. So just want to throw that out there, also the state level two budget targets coming out soon. Obviously, the budget we're at right now are the, for the state of Minnesota, is not in the best place. So we'll just keep working with that and seeing that hopefully there's some opportunities to give flexibility for school districts and really just help us out because it's going to be a tough year across the state. Right now, I know the numbers are different, but I heard different numbers from $300 million to $500 million in cuts across the state of Minnesota, alone in school districts. So it's, it's tough slightly right now, so we'll just keep working and keep moving forward at that point, too. On that note, we had the opportunity to invite Representative Reiver to come into our schools on Friday of last week, and we took him through the CTE program at the third floor. And it was just, it was awesome. The kids were amazed, the teacher did a great job, served us, gave them all, walked through what was light and real courses. And in every classroom, he kept telling kids, I wish I had this capacity. So I mean, it was just really fun to see his energy and to get that appreciation for them, he's doing some really special things in our district that don't happen anywhere else, so nothing accruals with him. We also walked through the middle school a little bit, the front entrance area specifically in the third floor, and it was just a really good kind of opportunity to talk about that piece of him about, as we focus on some of the means we got facility-wise, the importance again of this work done, and he was wonderful. He's a huge fan of us, just thanks everyone for the work that they do, and we'll be coming around a little bit more in the future as well, which I appreciate. Strategic planning's really going well, we're already into our second, and through the meetings and some of our groups, we've been really working really hard. I'll tell you with about three of the goals, number one, four, and five, we're probably closer to the end of our journey, we're getting some things in place that we committed to upfront, that we're getting ready to either implement or getting that prepared to be implemented in the fall. So they're working well, appreciate the people that are coming, remember those are always open to anyone that wants to come. If you're a little proud in the next two or three weeks, I'll have the next set of updates going out to our community on our webpage, and it's important to keep talking about that good message because we're doing some really good work, which again just enhances things we're already doing, so just appreciate everyone's efforts in that. Big day coming up, 4/9, soup with the soup. We're going to have an opportunity for people to break bread with myself, and Rob will be there as well. So we actually have a sign-up sheet for next one, in limited spaces, so it's on the 9th of April, 12 to 1:30 at the WCC Community Ed. So if the top, the topic for this day is going to be connecting, so we need to know people and their stories. We're also not above bond, more big than facilities, we have the thing, that's been the first time. Looking to do it again in May, and then obviously starting to get back in the fall, just another nice way to connect and make sure that people have an opportunity to, to hear our story and also to give some feedback on the process, too. We have attended a job there already earlier in the cycle, it's definitely. And I just want to just let people know that the nice part of the evening is that all their candidates in their program came through, and that opportunity with about 17 districts across the metro area. And Cora was with me, and it was just really nice and flattering because we had a lot of people come up and just talk about the good things they hear. And they had friends that student taught here, and practicos, people that lived here. Also, this is, Victor, Sarah and I did a presentation of the work we're doing with mentorship induction in our schools. So it was just really refreshing because again, they're really solid candidates, but more importantly, we're making an imprint on lots of people at that as well. I will tell you that we are seeing an uptick in some of the placements that are going to happen out here, we have people that are actually coming here, and obviously again, whenever you get two kids in a classroom, sorry, two kids, wow. A teacher and a student that's going to college, we win, two adults win the classroom. So we're excited about the opportunities that come with that piece, and we have that job there coming up in the next week in the metro area, so we'll keep pursuing that, too. And then the last piece, obviously, this is a sobering night from the perspective that, you know, part of the comments I made upfront about the amount of money being cut in Minnesota schools, we don't get to dodge that one either. We have some decisions obviously to make tonight, and it's always really hard, but I just want to make sure I acknowledge the fact that again, the people that we're in fact, they have made some big difference in impact on our students, and we're so grateful for their service and what they're going to do to finish up here as well. But just want people to know that again, it's, you know, it's always hard, and just appreciate everyone's support and process.
I, could I just add to that a little bit, there's a KSTP buyer partisan bill, and it just came out, and if you punch it at just KSTP, it's pretty telling, kind of really laid it out verbally, kind of where we are with the issue. And it's by partisan, I believe, so it's kind of an interesting thing if you listen to it. I was with the CTE guys on Wednesday, we have a student teacher from the University of Minnesota in the Ag Department, so we do, a lot of student teachers over the years, and the CTE guys are really excited about the visit, and just kind of were happy that, you know, to show off what they do. And then what kind of soup?
Take them all, right? And Rowan. And Ridley.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, which includes payment accounts, personnel, fees of vacancies and contracts, extracurricular. We are going to pull up Jeff's track shooting contract and vote on that separately. Past meeting minutes, so we'll need a motion in second to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to your side.
I'll second it. We have a motion in second, any questions about it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same time, consent agenda passes. Now we'll separately take Jeff's assistant track shooting coaching contract, we need a motion in second to approve his contract.
So.
We have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same time, that contract passes. Okay, we can move on to the new business. We just have to amend our January 6 meeting minutes. Our resolution was okay, but in the minutes we had the referendum date as the Aro versus name, so we just had to make a quick correction. So we need a motion in a second to make a correction to the January meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment January 6.
I'll second it. We have a motion in second, any questions about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same time, that motion passes. Okay, under new business, they have a number of donations, which are always so generous and so greatly appreciated. We have the TF Parents for Education Group, they donated to both this town and Nat's and Acoustic Pals. The first total was $1,047,000, and then a $3,000 donation. The TF Lions Club gave scholarship funds of $500. The St. Corey Foundation gave general operating grant for $5,000. The Elmaline Thrashery Company gave to FFA $1,000. The CLPTO gave Lakeside $865,000. And the BTO Social Committee gave Primary School $3,249,000. Peasants Forever gave boys and girls track shooting $250 apiece, and then Lyric gave to volleyball $1,200. So we'll need a motion, and then we'll take a resolution since it's a donation, but once again, so greatly appreciated, we have a generous community.
I saw, we'll never accept the motion.
Sarah, do you mind starting?
I, Sarah, aye.
Josh, aye.
Fran, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lori, aye. Our resolution passes. All right, so we're going to move on to budget adjustments, and I believe Rob is going to give us a chart presentation.
Okay, so thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. What I have for you tonight is our budget adjustments for FY '26. As you know, we started this process in the fall with a lot of projections and assumptions, and so using those projections and assumptions, we determined how much we would need to adjust. Our team, I'm going to point out there, the team out there, I'm going to try and stay within here, has worked together to come up with these adjustments. It's never an easy process, and I give so much credit to them. Sorry. Because no one person did this alone. Every single person on our executive cabinets and the board, and U.S. board members have worked really hard on this budget. We've spent many, many hours to determine how we as a district can make these adjustments and still be the best district that we can for our students. So we preliminarily reviewed these with our finance committee, and then all of you as a full board, and we've also shared this with the entire staff, and so now I'm going to show this document one more time with all of you for approval. So as we say, every good district adjusts their budget annually. So how did we get here? We, we had a loss of enrollment, and we're down over 200 students since 2020. Conservatively, I'm going to say that's over $5.5 million lost to that dropping enrollment. When I say conservatively, I didn't take the full gen net amount, I just took the basic revenue there. We had a loss of revenue, and obviously it was due to that dropping enrollment, but there were also other changes. We have changes in funding, for example, compensatory, we still don't know where that's going to come out with the legislature, but we know we're going to have a reduction of some sort in our compensatory dollars. We have unfunded mandates, unemployment, ESST, we have, which is our Safe and Sick Time. We have the Paid Family Medical Leave Act, that are all in legislation still, and we also have restricted uses of our funds, which means that we can only spend them in certain ways. So those are all some of those unfunded mandates that we have that are sitting there. We have negotiated settlements, and we're not apologizing for those settlements, but for settling for more than we receive in funding, we do know by doing that, we need to adjust. We have inflation, three to five percent at a minimum increase each year. And we've been told time and time again, and we all know this, that we all need to live within our means, so that's what we're doing. Again, decades of late state funding, if we, if we had, if inflation had kept pace, we would have, we would have an additional $6 million. We talk about $6 million and the 5.5, that's a lot of money that we could have in our district. We're financially equity poor district, we're a SAF district, or we choose to be a C district, and again, we're adjusting because we are a good school district. This is just a graph of our enrollment, and I like to show every time, and you can see unfortunately, we're decreasing from 2020, and that's where you can see over that 200 students, it's actually 220 if you go all the way down to the 3,200 that we're using for this year. The graph that we all seem to like right now, showing the bar graph are the adjustments that we've made over the years, you can see the years we didn't make adjustments, and then the line graph is where our fund balance is. We ended at a little over $3 million in our unassigned fund balance at the end of 6/30/24, which is just a tiny bit underneath that minimum school board policy, which is seven to 10 percent, we're at about, I think about 6.8 percent. So we're just about there. The budget assumptions that we have for FY '26, enrollment projection of 3,200. We do know that the increase in the general education formula now is 2.74, that has come, that has come down from legislators and to NDE. What that means for us is about 1.45, when we talk about 2.74, just on our general education formula, the 1.45 is on our total revenue in our district. And then we use a 3% average on all expenditures. So then moving into our adjustment summary, we have a combination of two positions, we have some retirement savings, and then based on enrollment, we have some reductions of certified and non-certified staff. And then the other adjustments that we have in our summary is we have some system efficiencies that we've been looking at through our copiers, printers, building checks, a reduction in some of our summer transportation, and then a decrease in our athletic training, not a total cut to that, but a decrease in that training. And so the total amount there we came to is $880,000, a little over $880,000. And that is all I have for you tonight, unless there are any questions on the board.
Any questions on the board?
Well, I can't go without making a couple comments, is this the time for discussion before the board?
Sure.
Across the state, they're making hundreds of thousands of dollars in cuts, if you watch that KSTP message by our legislators, even our legislators are finally getting it. I don't think I'm really speaking for the people in the room, but if somebody would happen to watch this, or people that are really concerned about where we are as a district, I hope you two listen. I don't know the big picture of this. Many of the schools that we have in our state are nearing SOD statutory operating debt, which we would call that bankruptcy, the way as how it was mentioned. And we've cut $3 million in two years, and we have a $3 million unassigned fund balance. So if you did the math with that, three minus three is zero, we wouldn't have much of an unassigned fund balance, I think. I'm not, like I said, I'm not speaking to anybody in this room, I think we're all soberly aware of where we are financially. And yet, as these cuts become more, these cuts come, and as they go deeper and deeper, they become more and more painful. I think this one is not quite as painful, but I don't want to understate those that are no longer going to be with us next year, that have been faithfully working as paras and teachers in our district. And I think we've cut approximately $15 million in 15 years, somewhere along there, maybe, Rob, if you did that, you'd probably share, but that's a lot of money in 15 years, and we just seem to be on that cut, 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 cut. Those really do affect culture, affect all of us, and I don't, I don't know a board member that hasn't really felt personal about this, and certainly the principals in the, in the buildings, as you look at cheer teachers, if you call them that individually, that's just really a difficult thing to face. And so I guess that we all really hope things change financially, but I think for the community, too, they have to know that we are living within our means, and we are doing what is necessary to the level that we need to cut. And I don't think we're going deeper than we need to, but is this certainly something that we're just going to see over and over and over again? And you look at the state by the, they're projecting $6 billion deficit for next year, we were $17 to $19 billion to the good last year, so if you kind of take a look at that. A, it's $24 billion swing, B, with a billion dollar swing, and hopefully we just see some changes someplace, and I would just encourage people to vote for that bond and help us out. Because every school's finding themselves in the same situation, only I think we've just been viscerally responsible in dealing with those cuts as we go forward. We've done what we can do, we live within our means.
Any other thoughts from the board? If not, we need a motion in second to accept the budget adjustments for 2026.
Make a motion.
I'll second it. Any other questions? All in favor of the budget reductions, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same time, the budget adjustments are accepted. Okay, we're going to move on to our resolution for non-renewal of Tier One teachers, this is something we have to do every year. We have a number of Tier One teachers in the district filling some vital positions, but this is just part of the process. So we need a motion in a second to non-renew the Tier One teachers. Make a motion. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Nope, we have a resolution.
Sorry, so Sarah, will you start? Sarah, aye.
Josh, aye.
Fran, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jeff, aye.
And Lori, aye. Okay, next, we have a resolution for non-renewing long-term substitute teachers, and again, this is something we do every year, so we need a motion and then a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Sarah, aye.
Josh, aye.
Fran, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jeff, aye.
And Lori, aye. Next, we have a resolution for non-renewing probationary teachers. So again, this is a resolution, so we need a motion in a second. Nope, we need a motion and a roll call vote.
I make a motion for the resolution for non-renewable probationary teachers.
Sarah, aye.
Josh, aye.
Fran, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lori, aye. The last resolution is for layoffs and COVID-20. Once again, we need a motion and a roll call vote, please.
I'll make a motion.
Sarah, aye.
Josh, aye.
Fran, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jeff, aye.
And Lori, aye. That resolution passes. Okay, we're moving on to the Wildcat Academy presentation.
Hi, Sarah, and hi to you. Yep, hi, everybody. It's a very brief presentation. All right, you've seen some of this before, just why are we exploring online learning? Four main reasons why, one, it suits with our mission statement of learning for all and trying to reach all students. Two, to attract and retain families who are looking for some more options, we heard that at our strategic planning pretty loud and clear, which ties into three, people and parents have been asking for this option. And then lastly, it's a, it's a pathway that we might be able to increase some revenue by keeping enrollment and reaching out to other families. This is the timeline, so how did we get here? So in 2020, we actually explored offering online learning during COVID, did a lot of the work, decided at that point not to do it, the statutes were a lot different. And so in 2023, Minnesota changed their statutes governing online learning, so it kind of became a time to look at it again, mostly with flexibility in how to staff them. And then this fall, we brought that to the board to talk about like, maybe, do you want us to explore it? And then in January, we checked in again, do you want me to continue to explore it? It was yes, and so now we're here today in March, and It was yes, and so now we're here today in March and, um, today's the day to ask if, if you would approve opening an online high school next year, Wildcat Academy High School, grades nine through twelve for fall of twenty-five. Um, so what has changed since 2020 is the statute changed. So there's more, um, staffing licensing requirements have opened up and you also don't have to go through the entire approval process with the state. Any Minnesota public high school can offer online learning full-time to students. So you don't have to go through all the, the application process again. Um, we see a reason why, we talked about enrollment declining, um, the high school's down forty students since the fall of 2019, just when you look at the enrollment. And I showed you those patterns the last time we talked about it, but we have ninety-nine students who are specifically not with us full-time or at all because they're going completely online right now. Um, that does not include homeschool families, that's just families choosing online. Then we talked last time I surveyed, so I just wanted to show you the survey results. So we did three different surveys. We surveyed online families, so the ninety who have left. We surveyed homeschool families in grades, um, eight through eleventh, like potentially, like who would be coming in. And then we served our, surveyed our own eight through eleventh grade families. And out of those survey results, um, what we found is three hundred and fifty-seven families responded, eighty-three said definitely yes, we would be interested in enrolling full-time with an online program. Um, so that's a combination across the three surveys. We were just doing some rough predictions, so if fifty percent of those families actually sign up and enroll, we would have about forty students and we're looking to cap it around thirty anyways, to start small and make sure we do the program right. So we do think we have interest there to offer it. So this is the request, um, to open Wildcat Academy High School for grades nine through twelve in fall. Our target enrollment is a minimum of twenty to make it go, but we'd also be looking at capping it around twenty-eight to thirty-two, primarily to even out grades. You can limit and say this many freshmen, this many sophomores to try to balance the grades as well. So that's where we come up with a thirty-two, roughly eight students per grade band, but we have some flexibility with that. And then the second request is to post a position for a Wildcat Academy coordinator here. So this would be somebody who's responsible for the daily oversight of the online programming, checking students' grades, putting in their scores, um, providing support to students if needed, you know? And that's in-person support and virtual support. And that position would report to me, um, the director of teaching. Lastly, um, that I, not lastly, there's another slide, um, budget. Just for year one, so roughly staffing, um, this is a few positions incorporated in that number. So the coordinator plus potentially a little FTE for like special ed services or counseling services or, yeah, like, so who is going to have to provide support depending on what we get for student enrollment? Curriculum, to provide the online curriculum is about fifteen thousand just for Wildcat Academy per year. And then the other is not sure what we'll need, you know, like some maybe curriculum writing hours, administrative supports, mailings, you know, just kind of that administrative side. So roughly, we're looking at, um, an expense of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in year one. If we get twenty students, they would roughly provide you the two hundred thousand and so we still would be at a, a gain. If we get to the thirty-two students, the game would be higher roughly at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar plus. And we've talked about like, we maybe hold that year one to like help determine like how to build the program, do we want to go bigger or not? But eventually that does become a little bit of revenue that the district could use district-wide then too. Then if you approve it, our plan is tomorrow, Michelle and I to meet and we will be, you know, writing articles in newspapers. We've got some emails that we would generate to send out to our families announcing that we would be doing this. Um, also all the online families and homeschool families, we can directly email them back and say thank you for filling out the survey. We're excited to announce that we would be opening this option for your families. We can, um, do some social media posts and also we have a website that would launch by end of date tomorrow. So at that point, I was, do you have questions? Yes.
This may be a long and short-term question, but how does our existing Wildcat Academy, like the skinnies, work with this?
It's separate, they'll both use the same platform, but basically that, that's still an option for our kids who need it in the school.
Begin with, they'll be full-time. We have those skinnies that are taught at the high school and they'll continue for next year. You have, well done, you've probably created more potential to serve than what you have spaces. So to me, it seems like the obvious question would be, how do you choose?
Oh, you have to, there's statute on how you do the lottery. So April fifteenth, the lottery will open. So families, we have an application that'll go up on the website tomorrow. It, it won't be open, it'll explain what they can do on April fifteenth, where they basically fill out a form and like saying my child is interested in what grades, their names, their birthday. That puts them into a spreadsheet and then you have to use a random generator to draw and select those students. However, there is some statute that if it's a district employee, they get preference. And once you draw a student, one student, if they have a sibling signed up, that sibling also gets to enroll. So that's basically how you do it, it's a random generator. Then at that point, when, we're gonna close the application on May second. We'll notify families on May fifth that they've been selected to, for enrollment. They will get a whole enrollment packet, they have basically a week to confirm that they're going to enroll to us by May sixteenth and then they will actually sign up for courses and everything by May thirtieth. That way, if we do have special education services, we have to make sure that we're meeting those statute requirements before school starts in the fall. So we've got it kind of all time lined out and everything will be ready on the website.
When they go to sign up, is there anyone on the form where it says if they're coming from online or they're coming from homeschool or is there within our, I'd just be curious.
Right, and you, I don't think we can.
We can.
Okay. We can, yeah. And you have to like, you can't ask if they have special education, basically you have to ask name, grade, birthday.
At that point, though, you're gonna have a pretty good idea. If it's eighty that signed up or eighty-three or forty-one and a half or where you are with your fifty or eighty-three, I have a pretty good idea. Me, we plan, obviously, future.
We did ask, um, one of the survey questions, if we offered supplemental enrollment, how interested would you be in that? And I, I can pull it up, but I think it was like, it was tied to like fifty percent.
Shut up. Yes, I'm saying, just to get a clarity on that piece, comprehensive needs are all like, you're taking courses in the program, you're a full-time student there, supplemental would be in there as opportunity to take a class or two and still go back and forth in the high school. As we've mentioned before, we lost our comprehensive, the simple fact that one, we feel the advantage that piece into some level, open up a full corridor that we're not ready for at this point. But to your point, if you're on top of the numbers, when I did look at the surveys and it, it was extremely high for that.
Fifty percent gave us out of a Likert scale four to five, how likely would it be for your child to take one or two classes online while still being enrolled at the high school? Fifty percent said, gave it a four or five, unlikely.
And we talked about all kinds of scenarios of people taking partial or full or whatever, you know, skinnies at the high school. You know, how many people would take that up? I think it's obviously great potential as people try to maybe make some positions hold in the high school and meet the needs of, um, individual coursework that my kids might want to get and including. Is there any higher, like higher path things out there?
Yeah.
Any higher?
Yeah, like pre-calc and all that. I mean, we didn't, we, pre-calc is probably about the highest. We went, we did not do any college level classes. We would primarily have our kids referred to go to the high school to take those college level classes.
That'd be a really great opportunity for people to get some advanced coursework, some extra things to do with enrollment or things.
It would be, our, it's a licensing issue right now too, like what you can do, so you'd have to have the accreditation to teach those classes.
Any other questions about the Wildcat Academy for Sarah?
Well, I have a question to the teacher coordinator position and just going back to the licensing, um, and the qualifications that we're looking for in this person. Not knowing much about it. Like how does, what does the licensure look like for that person that we?
You could be a licensed teacher and then there's a license called CCDP. I can't remember, cross-athletic, clerical delivery permissions?
Yep.
That would it?
That must be correct.
Yeah.
It's really good.
It's a new license company put out now, so if you are a tier three or tier four teacher, you get that license and you can teach any subject matter that Minnesota standards are tied to. So they would be allowed to oversee all those classes.
That's a recent change and that was a mirror before for schools. That's why I think there's been sort of really picking up steam. I think we showed you numbers before about now, Minnesota education class has just been spiking. That's one big reason for the change that piece, you have to run this up to a number of people to make.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just want to say good job, Sarah. That was a lot, well gathered, I'm sure.
Lot of help, lot of people.
I get it. Okay, good job, everybody.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Sarah. So we need two separate votes. First, we need to vote to approve the Wildcat Academy, starting in the fall. And then we need for the teaching position. So first, we'll take a motion and a second to start the program. I'll make a motion to start the Wildcat Academy. I'll sign it. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Now we need a motion and a second to add the teacher coordinator position.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to make that teacher coordinator position posted.
We have a motion. I'll have a second. Any other questions about the position? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same time. That motion passes. Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you all.
We appreciate it very much.
Yep.
Okay, the last thing on our agenda is, we don't need a vote, but we do need to discuss the fact that our review and comment was accepted and the details.
Yeah, it's really great. So again, obviously, part of the process for any type of bond, um, or facility piece that you're, you can do with the district, there is a required question to submit to report to the Department of Education, Minnesota, a certain amount of days before. We followed that process and fortunately enough, uh, right around the middle of March,